It's gonna be short, really. Second reading, second reading, second reading.
Pray. You look nice tonight, by the way.
Thank you.
You got a bar down there.
I gotta get in trouble with my little machine.
Yeah, I've had them situations before.
Coming through on, um, I'll be here.
All right. Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock and time to start this October fifth, twenty twenty-one meeting of the Gallatin City Council. We are officially called to order and now we are going to begin the meeting like we do each of our meetings with the invocation, the pledge of allegiance. Again, Councilman Alexander has graciously agreed to offer the invocation and, um, the pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilwoman George. If you'll stand with me, please.
Let every heart pray. In terms of worship God, once again, we come with thanksgiving in our hearts. We pray for God for the city of Galton and we pray for all of our first aid respondents all over this landing country. Bless their families in the mighty way as most of them or all of them put their lives on the line and sacrificed their own family time for all of us. So, Lord, please give them strength and courage to continue to do what they do. Ask a special blessing for Pastor J.D. Harris and the laws of his son and also in the laws of his wife. Give him strength, give him courage to continue to keep on keeping on because your word promised that you would never leave us nor forsake us. So, we ask all this in your son, Jesus' name. Everheart said, amen.
And please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kettrel, if you'd call the roll for us, please.
Vice Mayor Fennell.
Here.
Councilman Alexander.
Here.
Councilman Fann.
Here.
Councilwoman George.
Here.
Councilman Hayes.
Present.
Councilwoman Love.
Here.
And Councilman Overton.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Kettrel. Next, you have the minutes of the August seventeenth, twenty twenty-one meeting and the September seventh, twenty twenty-one meeting before you, um, if you've had a chance to review those.
Second.
Motion to approve both by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Are there any additions or corrections requested? I see none, all in favor of approving both sets of minutes. Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. They are approved unanimously. We now open the floor for public recognition on agenda-related items. That means if there's an item on this evening's agenda that you would like to speak to, you will come forward to the podium, introduce yourself, give us your, um, address as well, and you'll have five minutes to speak. There's also a time at the end of the meeting if you have an item that you'd like to address that's not on the evening's agenda, and you can do that at that time. But right now, public recognition on agenda-related items is now open.
My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street here in Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise tonight to talk about number eight on the agenda, which is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between Sumner County, cities of Hendersonville and Gallatin and the Resource Authority for borrowing money on behalf of the Resource Authority of Sumner County. Uh, I am for this. There was a question last week with regard to the position of Hendersonville. In a conversation with Mayor Clary, he made it clear that he was going to be in on this deal, uh, with regard to, uh, Hendersonville. The reason why they were not using the facility over there is because they had a contractor to take it elsewhere. This helps them and be able to have a place to put their trash in the future, and it does not hurt us one bit. I am for this and especially with the idea that Gallatin gets a little discount with regard to tipping fee because we're taking more, more, uh, responsibility with regard to making sure this thing operates. There's only one issue that I have with regard to that that would affect us, and Ms. Hi McCully can make sure about that is because of one thing, and it comes down to liability. We do not want that trash coming back into the city, the county, or, uh, Hendersonville because it should stop with that, with that entity. We're talking about the Resource Authority. That would be my only concern with regard to that because that is becoming a big stink down the road, and I can see that. We make sure we do not have that problem. But for other than that, go for it, Mayor. Good thing. Thank you.
Forward. Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on agenda-related items? Now would be your time. I see no one indicating that they wish to speak, so I would declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Move along now to Mayor's comments. I do have just a few events to alert you to. Um, very importantly, the Homer Bradley Motorcycle Ride for the Sumner County Food Bank is this Saturday. It starts at ten a.m. on the square. And, um, anyone that loves to ride motorcycles, I hear this is one of the best rides out there, and it's for a great cause. And so make sure that you check that out this Saturday, and let's all say a little prayer for good weather for them. Um, also, this Saturday is the Unlimited Potential Community Field Day. It's happening at Municipal Park from one P.M. to five P.M. I've been to a couple of those, they do a great job with them. On Saturday, the sixteenth, is the Club Abel Five K One Mile Walk Run at Gallatin Civic Center at eight a.m. And also on the sixteenth is the Unity Weekend Block Party at First Baptist Church on Winchester. That's just a few of the events going on. As I've told you before, the Gallatin Chamber has a calendar on their website that is a fabulous resource for the whole community, um, whether you want to, um, share an event or learn about the events that are happening. I encourage you to check them out, it's gallatindn.org. And, um, before I conclude my comments, I just want to say big compliments, big thanks to, um, Downtown Gallatin for the Main Street Festival last weekend. I, um, have no doubt that it was the best attended that I'd ever been to. Um, and really, uh, a, a good selection of booths and vendors and participants and, um, was just really impressed with how it turned out. Um, also, I had the, had the occasion that someone I was with found some money, and we found its way back to the rightful owner. So, my appreciation to the honest people out there that, that help people find what they've lost. That was kind of a fun little side note to the day, but it really was a fabulous festival. Every year when I go, I look at our Public Works guys out there hauling trash all day long. I try and thank them, I know that others did this weekend too. And, um, they work really hard to make that day go as well as they possibly can. Um, certainly, we had a lot of police officers out there as well helping. So, thanks to all the, the support services that our city staff gives to that, and thanks, as I said, to the organization of Downtown Gallatin because that is a much-loved and appreciated downtown event, and it went very well this year. That concludes the Mayor's comments, we're gonna move on to the regular agenda. I have had a request to move item six, eight, and nine up to be three, four, and five. Does anyone have any objection to doing that? Okay, we will move them up accordingly, if I don't forget by the time we get there. But the first item is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash fifty-five and I'm sorry, I want to check something that we just did. That was your, your timer, Mr. DeBoer, you did very well. Sorry, I just wanted to make sure since we had some people having to leave that I thought we would be okay. So, anyway, um, item number one is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash fifty-five. Councilman Alexander, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the appropriate in four hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-nine dollars to T D E C V W, uh, Diesel Settlement Environmental Mitigation Trust, trust large truck grant for a large truck replacement program, and I so move.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, a second by Councilman Fann. Any discussion on this, any questions? Glad to get the vehicle. This is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash fifty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It is passed second reading unanimously. We will now move to item number six, which is first reading on ordinance oh two one one zero dash sixty-two. Councilman Hayes. I thought you went, uh, uh, when I said that we were gonna move six, eight, and nine up to two, three, and four. So, we'll pick up with two after we do these three.
All right, yeah, all right. Item number six is first reading of ordinance zero two one one zero dash six-two. Ordinance to redistrict the five-voting district for the city of Gallatin, Tennessee based on twenty twenty United States Census. Um, and I think we had talked about it last week, I think we're gonna go with number three. So, motion to move number three on. Proposal number three.
I thought you had decided on four.
Number three.
No, it was three, okay. All right, regardless, I was, I have a motion by, um, Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Overton. Was going to point out to you that this ordinance does not have your choice attached to the ordinance, but next week or, or next council meeting when we vote on it, on second reading, it will be attached because that's a very important part of that ordinance. Um, I believe that that is what is up there, and, um, opening the floor for any discussion, questions, further debate?
Good.
All right, well, this is first reading on ordinance oh two one one zero dash sixty-two um, in support of option number three. Um, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Moving now down to item eight, which is resolution R two one one zero dash sixty-five. Councilman Hayes.
Yeah, this is resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement between Sumner County, Tennessee, the cities of Hendersonville and Gallatin, and the Resource Authority of Sumner County for borrowing money on behalf of the Resource Authority of Sumner County. Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion, are there any questions on this? And this is resolution R two one one zero dash sixty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. This does pass unanimously. Now, item nine is resolution R two one one zero dash sixty-six. Councilman Alexander, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is resolution establishing property maintenance board of appeal. I so move.
Second.
A motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Any discussion on this?
I just wanted to call those names out, Mayor, if I may.
Okay.
Sam Kirby from December the thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-three. Steve Camp, December the thirty-first, uh, twenty twenty-three. Roger Matchett, uh, December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And, uh, Jordan Wallace, December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Dale Fleming, December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Brian Harris, December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. And Robert Montgomery, December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Which is seven board members.
Mayor, if I may interject, we really need to have a second reading on number five first. If you want to defer this.
Good point, thank you.
We need to defer this right now until we vote on number five that establishes the board.
Motion to defer by Councilman Overton, second by Councilman Fennell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. We're deferred, we're gonna move back up to item number five, which is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash sixty-one. Um, amending the property maintenance standards. Councilman Fann, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance amending Gallatin Municipal Code, Chapter Five, Buildings and Building Regulations, Article Seven, Property Maintenance Standards, and I so move.
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Fann, second by Councilman Alexander. And the reason that we had to defer and move back up to this one is because it establishes the board that we're, that's part of we're, we were moving ahead to establish the board that is a part of this. So, is there any discussion or questions on this? Everyone feel, feel good? Okay. This is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash sixty-one. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is approved unanimously, moving back down to item number nine. Um, you've heard the names, you've heard the eight-member board. Um, any questions, comments?
The eight or seven member?
Seven members.
I thought it was eight.
Nine. Nine, it's number nine.
Item eight, nine.
Item number nine.
It used, it started out as nine.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, seven members.
Yeah, okay.
Um, had a motion by Councilman Alexander, do we have a second on that already, Ms.? Okay, we're very good then. Um, with that, this is resolution R two one one zero dash sixty-six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Now, we're gonna move back up to item number two, which is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash fifty-six. And for it, Councilman Hayes is recognized.
Yeah, this is an ordinance appropriating nine hundred ninety-nine thousand fifteen dollars and sixty cents for TDOT multimodal access grant for Vol State Gap Trail Phase One project. Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilwoman George. Is there any discussion? And this is second reading on the ordinance oh two one zero nine dash fifty-six. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say no. It's approved unanimously. Item number three is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash fifty-seven, and Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a second reading on an ordinance appropriating one million five hundred sixty-five thousand six hundred forty TDOT congestion mitigation and air quality improvement program grant, grant for I T S Phase Two project for which the city of Gallatin has no match, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilwoman George. Any discussion? It's really exciting since we're finally about to go to, get close to construction on Phase One. Um, all right, this is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash fifty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Item number four is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash sixty. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the second reading for ordinance appropriating insurance recoveries in the amount of four thousand two hundred forty dollars and four cents for repair of damages to pedestrian bridge. I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilwoman Love. Any discussion? This is second reading on ordinance oh two one zero nine dash sixty. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously. Now, we're moving back down to item number seven, which is first reading on ordinance oh two one one zero dash sixty-four. And Vice Mayor Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance appropriating funds in amount of six hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars for a new fire engine. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Alexander. Any discussion, questions? All right, this is second reading, uh, I'm sorry, first reading on ordinance, um, oh two one one zero dash sixty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. Moving now to the next page, I think I got everything. It, um, item number ten, which is resolution R two one one zero dash sixty-seven. Councilwoman George.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, this is a resolution supplemental to the master as, resolution pertaining to water and sewer revenue obligations, authorizing the issuance of not to exceed fifteen million, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in aggregate principal amount of water and sewer system improvement bonds, series two oh two one A, and not to exceed twenty-two million dollars in aggregate principal amount of water and sewer system revenue refunding bonds, series two zero two one B federally taxable of the city of Ne, of Gallatin, Tennessee, making provisions for the insuance, uh, sale and payment of said bonds and establishing this terms thereof and the disposition of proceeds therefrom. I also have to add to this that the state has, um, uh, received approval and has received the refunding, the, received the funding. I so move.
Yeah, and, and just
Second.
A motion by Councilwoman George, second by Councilman, Vice Mayor Fennell? Councilman Hayes, okay, second by Councilman Hayes. Um, what, what she's referring to is that we do require state approval before we can do this, and we did receive that this week. So, we just let you all know that. Um, any questions, discussion on this? This is resolution R two one one zero dash sixty-seven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It's passed unanimously. And item number eleven is resolution R two one one zero dash seventy. Councilwoman George. I'm sorry, Councilwoman Love, I'm looking right at it instead of George, I don't know why I did that.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution awarding a bid to conduct a city classification and compensation, compensation study, and I so move.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Vice Mayor Fennell. Is there any discussion? We're all glad to get moving on that as well. This is resolution R two one one zero dash seventy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. It is passed unanimously, and that concludes our regular agenda and brings us now to other business. I would ask if any member of this council has other business to bring forward. Okay, I know that, um, Richard DePries from our Public Works Department does have one thing to bring to you all.
Good evening, Richard DePries, Gallatin Works Public, Public Works Director. Uh, the Preservation Foundation of Sumner County is gonna be hosting an event on October sixteenth at the Comer Barn. I think it's a fundraising event, uh, for stuff going on there at the Comer Barn. But they've requested twenty trashcans to be dropped off for their use. There's gonna be food vendors and, uh, was, wanted to know if the city could help them out. So, wanted to see how this council felt about that.
Second.
Second, third.
Have a motion by Councilman Overton, a second by Vice Mayor Fennell. The time I call it just to be sure, it's not on city property, it is for a nonprofit. We've done similar things, we should be okay, correct? Okay, with that, all in favor of approving the use of trash, and you're okay with doing it?
Yes.
Um, um, the use of trashcans.
It's not gonna be any overtime or anything, we'll drop them off Friday, pick them up Monday, so.
Okay, perfect. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, it's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. DePries. Is there anyone else, um, with other business to bring forward in that arena? Okay, um, now moving on to public recognition on non-agenda-related items. This is where you can come forward, if you have an item that's not on the agenda, address the council. Um, again, give us your name and address, and you'll have five minutes to speak. With that, public recognition on non-agenda-related items is now open.
My name is Joe DeBoer and I live at one double oh seven Hart Street in Gallatin, Tennessee. I rise tonight at this juncture in our meeting to, uh, thank, uh, a dear lady that works for us, Ms. Rosemary Bates. She does an outstanding job in, in her capacity. We appreciate what she brought to the table last week with regard to the report on the bridge out at, uh, Albert Gallatin. As far as I'm concerned, if we have any projects that, uh, we need to have done and have a contractor involved with it, she's the lady that needs to be in charge of that operation as far as I'm concerned. She is the best. I followed her for several years, and, uh, even though we may fuss, she may fuss at me a little bit, all I'm gonna say is she's just leaving somebody else alone. So, with that, with that, with that, dear friends, I have to give a thumbs up to Ms. Rosemary. Now, uh, I would like to bring up a couple of three things that might be of interest to the council. Number one is I noticed now that, down at, uh, Goodlettsville that they are involved with Arbor Day group of, uh, men certified as a tree community. I think that is something we ought to look into. And that's something you might want to look in the future. Second thing is, I noticed down in Chattanooga, the Trust for Public Land had a project down there where private money was brought into that community and put in a, uh, greenway, nice greenway down there. That might be something we might want to look into. Third is the American Battlefield Trust has as their, their project all battlefields in, in our country. And I think that we need to have our, our park that the mayor has, has done great about getting for us where according to history, John Hunt Morgan camped one, one, uh, winter out, out next to high school, old high school. So, that, with that in mind, they might be able to come up with number one, identifying that as a historical place for that particular thing. And number two, we might be able to get some funds down the road to help us put, put together something out there as a, whatever. They do a lot of, of philanthropy work along that line. Uh, don't know if we get anything there, but that'd be something to look into. Finally, several years ago, Mayor Graves asked Chief Bandi to look at a street where pace goes between Council and Blythe Street. The street is fifteen feet wide. It needs to be looked at again because they have a two-way street there, and there's a lot of truck traffic into that warehouse behind it. And I think we'd be wise to make that a one-way street, it doesn't cost us anything but the signs, and make Council also a one-way street in there. And I'm leaving that all up to you, y'all have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. DeBoer. All right. Anyone else wishing to speak with public, come forward, sir.
Good evening, members. Before I start my presentation, I would like to congratulate Mayor Brown or Warren.
Sir, name and address, if you would, please.
My name is John Horn, address one thirty-eight Franklin, apartment one oh six, Christian Towers. Right, son? I am here tonight to, to talk about a problem that you may not be aware of, and that is the problems of the mentally ill and the homeless. This is a lot before me because I've been a, because I've been a, uh, because we have a lot, we have a homeless problem and, and here, and I would like to address what my body likes to do for it. The problem I see is having to see, is having to walk down Bay Street and find all the vacant buildings. What I would propose is to have a shelter for the homeless and mentally ill in one of those buildings. I've thought long and hard for that, and I think it would be a better situation for somebody to use since it's been vacant. I know it's been, I know what it's like to be homeless and mentally ill. I've been ho, I've been homeless, I've been mentally ill for twenty-three years, and two of those years I was homeless. The reason I want, I think it would be useful is we would have the time for the, a place for the homeless and for the mentally ill to have a place to go to put up, to put, again, a place for fresh clothes and food. I know what it's like to be, um, homeless. I was in, I've been homeless for three years, and I would like to see that, um, that the people in Gallatin, such as the mentally ill and the homeless, have a place to go. My proposal, if I may, I may, I'd say I'd like to have a, uh, drawing put into as I was saying, it would be a nice place for them to get a nice warm place when it's cold and place for them to go when it's hot. cold, and a place for them to go when it's hot. I know what it's like to live in the homeless and forgot where my food would go from. I know what it's like to sleep in the snow. I know where and how it is, and I know where to go to get your own food. I see people going in the dumpster to find out, to find the food. I did the same thing. I was in there when I was homeless, and nowhere to go, and nowhere my next meal was going from where my... I'd be sleeping. That's all I have tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Horn, and thank you for your advocacy work. It's obviously a cause very close to your heart. I said, "Thank you for your advocacy work. It's obviously a cause very close to your heart." Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? I see no one. I'll declare public recognition on non-agenda-related items closed. And with that...
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Fennell, second by Councilman Overton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Everyone have a nice evening. Thank you for joining the meeting tonight, and we look forward to seeing you again soon. Take care.